The regular meeting in Lake Lure Board of Adjustments for October the 25th, 2016. We'll have, first have the roll call. Have Mr. President, Mr. Ron Erickson, board member, David Butts, Mark Cook, Melvin Owensby, myself, John Kilby. We also have alternate Dave Lusk.
And Rick Stockdale.
And Rick Stockdale. Absent today is Lynn Weaver. She had, Lynn had something come up. She was not able to be present today. Also show that Shannon Baldwin, Community Development Director, is in, representing the town. And Mr. Stephen Weber, our board liaison, is present as well. So, first thing that we will do is need an approval of the agenda. One change, omission on the agenda that we need to add, amend the agenda is down under number six, under Old Business. I had mentioned last month about the impervious surface area, and we talked about it a little bit, and everybody was going to think about it over the past month and decide if we felt like we needed to ask if there any, have any opinions to pass back to the board, so we'll add that under six A, under Old Business. Anything else anybody sees? Have a motion for the amended agenda?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Butts to have a second. Second?
By Mr. Hook.
I'm sorry. Hook. And a second by Mr. Erickson. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ready? And approval of the minutes from the September 27th, 2016 meeting? Anyone see any? They were pretty lengthy. Anybody see anything that needed to be changed, or did not? If not, have a motion for approval.
I've got some changes.
You've got some changes?
I do.
Okay.
So, page three reads, Ms. Ryan having to removing existing impervious service, having to remove, not removing. Top of page four, I believe it, she also state, states or stated she had, I guess stated, she, she had concerns, not he had concerns. I'm assuming the she is Ms. Booth, Ms. Use her there?
What paper?
Ah, sorry. First paragraph, top of page four, it's continuation actually of a paragraph from the previous page. So she also states she had concerns about parking. Fifth paragraph down, was it William Owens or Williams Owens?
William Owens.
That's what I thought, so take the S off Williams. Page five, are you ready? This one I'm going to need help with, but so be the, there's a continuation of the paragraph on the top, so it'd really be the second paragraph down or the third paragraph as it The, I think we're missing something in there. Concerning the culvert pipe, it says, so he mentioned, he mentioned that this property has been very difficult because of how skinny the lot is. He explained that he walked the property and could not locate an outlet. I would say for, at the end of outlet, I'd say for, what was it?
Culvert.
For culvert pipe on Snug Harbor Circle.
Storm running.
Or storm running, yeah. Part of the additional land disturbance which they, so moving down that same paragraph says part of the additional land disturbance which they had NO, which should be not planned.
Where are you at?
Same, same paragraph, middle, about middle way down, it says, part of the additional land disturbance which they had no plans should be not. And there's, I mean, it's not a big deal, but after culvert, I don't believe there should be a comma there on that same, same thing. Moving to page six. First paragraph, page six, about a two-thirds, a three-quarters of the way down, it says, he mentioned that he, that the disturbed areas have already been temporarily ceded, instead of temporary ceded, or temporarily ceded, they were, I'm not sure. Also temporarily ceded, since I'll make my correction. So the very first paragraph, when talking about the condition, says, condition that revised, that a revised landscape plan must be submitted to the environmental management officer, and that any tree removal occurring outside the original building and grading envelope will be added. From the original, or from the, outside the building and grading envelope from the original site plan must be replanted in accordance with section 92.121D. Did you get that? And that's it for me.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections.
I make a motion.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was Melvin, a second.
Yeah. So, you know, these were pretty lengthy and a lot of discussion, so, you know, the way this works, so everybody knows, is after we've approved these, Michelle gets them corrected, printed off, and there's, they're, all the corrections are made before they're signed and to become official document with the board. So, it's important that we go through that part and do that, so. David, appreciate you. Going through them like that. Okay, we will begin the hearings. Our first hearing for today for Board of Adjustments is DROP dash 201, 6014, a vacation rental operating permit request from Tracy McGowan, agent from Mark and, Mark and Hammond to operate a residential vacation rental, tax-pented application number 162-8854 at 142 Waters Edge Court, Lake Lure, North Carolina, 28746. All of those wish to testify, please stand to be sworn in this case. If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and that's about the truth? If so, please say aye do.
Aye do.
Thank you. Let the record show that Shannon Baldwin, Town Community Development Director, was sworn, as well as Ms. Tracy McGowan, representing the property owner. First of all, let me ask, are there any ethical considerations considering this case? Are there any conflicts of interest that anyone has that they need to disclose?
No conflicts of interest.
None here.
Okay, none being said. Any ex parte communications that have been, happened in regards to this case?
None.
No? I just asked Ms. McGowan the, the address, directions to the site.
I met Ms. McGowan on the site, but we did not discuss the project.
And I have not had any either. Is there any financial, anyone to, financial gain to be made by anyone as a result of this proceeding today?
No, not here.
Okay, none, none for me either. Ms. McGowan, do you wish to challenge anyone that's on the board today for this case? All right. So if we threw all the formalities that, we will begin by the staff presentation by Mr. Baldwin, yours.
Chairman Kilby, just going to read the memo of the record, and raise one correction I'm going to make in the memo, and that correction stems from the application and I'll explain it. Tracy McGowan, agent from Mark and, Mark and Hammond, is requesting a vacation rental operating permit to operate a five-bedroom residential vacation rental, 142 Waters Edge Court, Lake Lure, North Carolina. Property is located, and this is the correction, it's located in the R1D residential zoning district.
R what?
R1D. D is in David. And there is an existing single-family dwelling on the lot. Residential vacation rentals are permitted to use in the R1D district, subject to special requirements contained in 92.042 of the zoning regulations. Section 92.042 AV2 of the zoning regs states that the DROP applications are deemed in nature and of, and processed as a conditional use permit. This request was sent to the Development Review Committee for review on October 6th, 2016. Any comments received, these, there were some comments received, and those are included in your packet. Pursuant to 92.0462 of the zoning regs, zoning planning board review was not required due to the fact that there were no proposed changes to the appearance of the buildings or premises. In your application, upon DRC review, a couple of comments were made. Basically, it was affirmed that the property, it was confirmed by Lynn Ward that neither of, or this property is, is not on the town's building for water and sewer. And then also Dean Gibbons, Lake Operations Director, basically brought up the fact that although they stated that no motorized boat rental was part of the application, but in the application, it was stated that kayaks were going to be used, and he goes on to say that if it's included in the rental property, then it is a commercial activity and will require a commercial application due by November the 1st. So they just, I needed to know that, and that was communicated through the application. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Baldwin?
They did go ahead and get the application for the commercial license, though, right? It's in my package.
Yes.
So that has been taken care of.
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Baldwin? Okay. Ms. McGowan, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please, ma'am. Just state your name and your position in this, please.
I'm Tracy McGowan with Buffalo Junction Properties, Realtor.
And you're representing the Hammond's, right?
Yes, sir.
And there is a letter approving her, authorizing her, sent by Mark Hammond in the packet. Okay? Would like to hear your, what you have to say forth, please.
It is a five-bedroom home, well-built. We just had some repair work done to all the railings that have been taken care of. They will be painted within the next month, and other than that, structurally, everything else has been taken care of.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Ms. McGowan? I felt like I'd been to Disneyland when I went down and up the driveway, when I was there yesterday afternoon.
It's a little wild.
Could be, it could be winning my award for the steepest driveway in Lake Lure so far. I'm not sure, but it's close.
Mr. Kilby.
I love some room.
On the, on the property card, I see that it only says three bedrooms, instead of So how are you coming up with the two extra bedrooms?
Well, I don't know when that property card was actually done, because I know that the lower level was finished.
2014, I believe.
14, okay, that, that might have been completed at that time. There is one bedroom on the main level. Upstairs, there is another bedroom, and then downstairs, there are two bedrooms with a sleeping, like a loft thing, not a loft, bunk room.
It says in the GIS card that in 2002, the basement was 100% complete.
That I'd have to confirm with the owners.
And in 2014, changes were made to the house and accessory structures. But as Mr. Owensby states, only three bedrooms have been permitted by the county.
Okay. I'd have to check with the owner on that.
Mr. Baldwin, do you have any thoughts? Thoughts on that, what we would?
Well, one of the things I would need to do is pull permits in 2014, see what was permitted, and to see what was permitted in 2002, to see if the extra bedrooms actually showed up.
Yeah, because as, as what I see in this package on the property card as of January of 2014, it says there's only three bedrooms. There are actually eight rooms, but there are only three of them that are considered So I would actually have a hard time approving five bedrooms based upon this property card as of 2014.
Sure. It would be certainly at the board's discretion, if you chose to prove, you actually could add the condition that permits be discovered that allowed for the other two bedrooms. If those permits were not discovered, then they, they actually would receive the vacation rental.
And I guess it could be that the property cards incorrect.
Could be.
Never.
He must work for the cap.
Yeah. One, one potential or another condition would be mainly just, because one of our findings of fact is adequate, for public health, would be adequate sewer collection. And so, the, what, what is the, how's the sewer, the waste dealt with in this town?
It's a septic pump, pump up to a sewer, to CWS for the resort.
Yeah, that would suit.
But the CWSD sewer, I believe they're, they do?
They do.
Okay. All right.
And they, that basically is into the town system, and then they pay us one fee. So we're not charging them by customer, if my understanding is correct.
So, in the past, when we've had issues with number of bedrooms, a lot of it has been tied to the sewer, which wouldn't be, just, just from my, my opinion, wouldn't be a case necessarily in this.
Since it's not a septic.
Case, because it's not septic related.
Well, this board is not involved with code violations. It's naturally Rutherford County. But when we see that the county is only permitted for three bedrooms, this board cannot go along with a request for more than that, knowing that the county has set a limit on a certain number of bedrooms. And this could be because often, buildings are, basements are, are finished after they've gotten their certificate of occupancy from the county. Bedrooms can be added, which are not in compliance with county codes, such as Egress from bedrooms, where there are no windows, or the windows are not the right height. Again, our board is not involved with that, but knowing that the county has to review this, and they say it's only three, this, this board can't authorize more than three.
Well, I would say, as, as Mr. Baldwin has stated, that we could, we could approve the request upon the verification by Mr. Baldwin, that the county is aware and that the record will be changed on the property card to, to indicate five bedrooms, instead of the three, and that way, it wouldn't be a situation where we had to come back for another hearing if that's, if we find that the property card's wrong, number one, or if we find, number two, that, you know, something like that happened, it could require another inspection.
Sure.
Anything like that.
And it, and it possibly could be rectified that way. If you were to add that condition, and we communicate back to property owner what the, what the situation is, and they called the county, and it's a matter of them coming out and doing an inspection, to basically verify that those two bedrooms were added in compliance with the county's state building code that could be resolved that way.
Right.
But it may be a situation where they come out and inspect it, and they say, no, we didn't get to inspect the wiring, and we didn't even inspect whatever, and, and you're going to have to tear something out to, to show us that it was put in according to the code, and you're going to have to pull a building permit. I mean, that could be part of it.
That could be.
We won't know until we communicate with the owner and the county regarding the situation.
But the applicant could apply for a three-bedroom at this point, with nothing changing.
Right. And then alter it after.
Right. That's correct.
Would we be required, if the applicant applied for a three-bedroom, to still have a condition if they wanted to alter it? Is that an administrative process?
If you approved it as a three-bedroom, they could use it as a three-bedroom.
But let's say they, let's say she came back and, and had adequate proof that it was a five-bedroom, would that be something that staff could make a decision on, or would that have to then go for a whole nother?
If you approved it as a three-bedroom, it would have to, it would have to be a three-bedroom, and the occupancy would be limited according to.
But, and if they came in to amend, amend that.
They could do that.
But would it have to come back before the board to amend it? So if we, the way to avoid that would be to, to do it with a condition. We can approve three with, with the condition that it can be changed to five.
Upon adequate proof.
Upon adequate proof from the county building inspections.
Correct. That would result in my mind.
That'd be the way to go.
Representing the owner, how do you feel about that?
I'm, I'm fine with the three-bedroom acceptance, and then have Mr. Harmon, him and go ahead and contact the county to get those other ones, make sure they're on the property card correctly.
And get it.
I don't have a problem with that at all.
Get it corrected.
And plus, also, excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry, it, it only benefits because the house is for sale too, and that has to be corrected anyway for the, the purchase of the, the house going forward.
Something's going to have to be corrected, or.
Right.
Rectified one way or the other. Okay. Satisfied, Melvin?
Yeah.
Not really.
With that?
Well, not really, but I mean.
Well, I mean, what, what about it's not, that, we're not giving them anything other than, than, we're, we're giving them what they want, as long as they prove that there's, should be five, that it should say five bedrooms, or they get the inspections done, that changes it to five bedrooms. I guess here's, if we didn't have a property card, we would know how many bedrooms, because we're not allowed to go in and look. So that, that's kind of a situation there that we have to deal with too, you know, it's, we're, we're approving something, if we didn't have a property card, we wouldn't know if it had one bedroom or 12, since we're, we're not, we don't go in inside and do inspections inside. So, I guess, make sure, if, if we approve it for three, which the property card says it has, with the condition that they can only operate it as three, unless they have the county prove, come out and, and, and change the property card to show five, if they do that, then we would, or their permit would allow for five. Is that acceptable for you?
Yeah, that'd be acceptable.
Okay.
So Ms. McGowan's got to request approval to amend the application, and then we.
No, we're doing it as a condition, not, not an, not an amendment. Well, yes.
We'll need to.
We'll have to amend the application to three.
Why don't we leave it a five-bedroom, only operate as a three-bedroom? It doesn't matter, whatever.
No, you'd have to change it to three.
Staff opinion?
I'm not going to go along with, with just five, but.
Staff opinion?
I think, I think the resolution may be that it stays five-only application, but you only grant three of the five, three of the five, and you only get the two extra, which is based on your condition. If, if the application's amended to say three, she can't have more than three, no matter what condition you place on.
Can we not do it the other way? Can we not approve it as three?
Yes.
And then, they have to come in with, from the county, and prove to, to the town that it has been approved, or that they are allowed, and you amend it up to the five from there. In other words, that's putting a condition of the five, but only approve it as three, not five. With the condition that if they come in and it's, it's acceptable at five, then you, the town, due to the condition, has the right to change it over to the five, but if not, then it's only granted as a three. I don't, I don't go, I don't feel comfortable granting five.
Well, it's at the board's pleasure. I think one of the things we would make clear in the order, which is the actual permit, when we give them a permit, permit says you only get three, if you prove to us that the other two are in compliance per county, you get the other two. And that would be the permit that, with the order that comes from this board and is signed.
I think that would cover that.
I think we're arguments maniacs.
I think we, I think we are too. I think it's this. I think we're saying the same thing, we're just saying it two different ways.
And I would say, so, so the order would read that it'd be three with a max occupancy of ten.
Ten.
Versus five with 14.
Right.
Until, so we approve it as, as, so we do not need to amend the application, just put the condition on there.
Well, she wouldn't be allowed 14 at, at five bedrooms, would she?
No, no. So she's allowed three with 10, and then if she proves that she hasn't, it's the same thing you're saying, just worded differently.
But she can't have the occupancy of 14?
No.
Not unless she proves that she, those two bedrooms were.
They can with five bedrooms.
No, they can't.
No, 12 is the maximum allowed.
12 is the maximum allowed, period.
Okay, I thought in that district, in R1D, it was, had different.
No.
So that 12 would be max.
Period.
Period.
Right.
That's right. Even if they prove they have the other two, 12 is the max.
So that being said, the application's incorrect, seven fourteen.
That's correct.
Right, it'd be amended anyways.
Three and 10.
Three and 10, five and 12.
Right.
That was two per bedroom plus four.
Right.
Was this that different with our, our 1D?
No, it's not. I thought it was, but it's not.
Confusion as a football bad end.
Well, I would suggest that Ms. McGowan amend it to five and 12. I'm going to vote on that, amend the condition.
I'd say that's the best, best way for us to go.
So you want me to go ahead with the five and 12?
If you ask, request to amend to, to say five bedrooms, with the proposed occupancy max occupancy of 12.
Okay. I'll go along with that. And then, going forward, what do I need to do to bring it back to in front of the board?
You won't have to bring it back in front of the board if we approve it with the condition that, once it's satisfied to, to the town staff, that the county says there's five bedrooms.
Okay.
It won't, it won't have to come back before the board.
What if they only approve it to four?
We can say up to five. So you'd be, you'd have a leeway between anything between three and five, in the condition. And you'd still be allowed your 12 bedrooms at four.
Okay.
12 occupancy at four.
So I just need to bring proof back to Shannon after I've talked to the county and Mark's talked to the county about the property card.
And you can operate as a three without doing anything. Three and 10 as a max occupancy, and that's what the condition will read.
And which you're going to probably send the inspector out, too, I may.
Oh, property inspector, yes.
Yeah, probably that should be communicated from the county back, directly back to town staff.
I definitely will need an inspection report or something writing before the files so we can prove that it's been two of them, one or two of them.
Someone check your alarm. Mine's laying up here, so I'm pretty good, I'm safe. They got whoever it was.
I didn't hit my phone. Just David, David lost, can we?
Okay, we got it now?
So I make a motion to amend the app...
Can she see it? Pardon? Are we done before she can see it?
Well, as soon as we get this amendment done right here.
I make a motion to amend the application to state number of bedrooms as five and total proposed occupancy as 12.
Okay, you have a motion made by Mr. Butts to change the number of bedrooms to five and the proposed occupancy.
Actually, I guess it would be just change proposed occupancy from 14 to 12.
14 to 12, yeah. Do you have a second to that?
Looking at me?
I'm looking at anybody that's second that we changed it from.
I don't agree with that. I think it should be three and 10 until it's proven. I agree.
Well, we're going to address that through a condition. We're going to... I thought we had agreed that we would address that issue with the condition so that it didn't have to come back to the board to be changed.
So right now, we're just saying 12, and then we'll put the condition on it later for the three and 10.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Okay, we need a motion now with the condition added to achieve what it was we wanted to achieve. Please note in the motion that we change R3 to R1D in the second line there.
Yeah, up above the number of bedrooms?
No, on the motion itself here.
Oh.
That it be, the zoning district be changed to R1D. So again, here's what we're doing. We're not giving them anything that we don't want them to have until they have gone to the county, gotten the tax record, the property card, and everything straightened out, and the county's notified, town staff, that this has been done, and then they have the approval of a maximum occupants of 12. They can have eight bedrooms, I guess, if they want to have it, but you can't have more than 12 people in there. Okay? And they can't operate it other than that until that's shown and proven. You ready?
Yeah, I'll run this by Shannon before we actually make the thing.
We want to be sure we get this right, so we...
Shannon, the condition I'm proposing, and just like you to weigh in on, be with the following conditions. The applicant can only operate a three-bedroom, 10 occupancy, vacation rental until adequate proof that up to five bedrooms have been permitted by Rutherford County or by...
Yes.
For the county building inspections.
Okay.
And town staff.
I would add... Adequate proof to town staff.
We'll just add and town staff, as Melvin suggested, I think I've covered.
Who, actually, two, is it going to come to you, zoning administrator? Who's she giving adequate proof to? Did you just put zoning administrator in your operating left? All right, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
With regard to application number VROP 2016014 for a vacation rental operating permit to operate a residential vacation rental in the R1D zoning district, I move the board to find that the application is complete and that the proposed use, if operated according to the application and any conditions attached heretofore, meets the following standards. One, it will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Two, it will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property. Three, it will meet all standards and requirements specified in the regulations of the town. Four, it will be in harmony with the neighborhood character and in general conformity with the applicable elements of the comprehensive plan. And five, satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made for those matters specified in Section 92.046D of the zoning regulations of the town of Lake Lour. Accordingly, I further move the board to grant the request of vacation rental operating permit in accordance with and only to the extent represented in the application and plans as amended with the following condition. That the property can only be operated as a three-bedroom, 10 occupancy, vacation rental until adequate proof has been given to the zoning administrator of the town of Lake Lour that up to five bedrooms have been permitted by Rutherford County and the town of Lake Lour.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Butts' motion with the conditions attached to address the bedroom issue. Any further discussion? Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hook. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous. Ms. McGlohan, you... Case is approved with the conditions. You can get with Shannon, and he'll prepare something so you can make sure the Hammonds understand what it is that has to happen, or you'll be the person, as the agent, that takes care of that. Okay? Thank you very much. I'm sorry, yes, I do. We'll do that next time. Mr. Hook just reminded me that normally... I guess I was the one mainly most confused at the end. We go through each one and ask how you vote. We voted as an open vote on that, just that we need to go back, you think, and ask each person individually.
I believe considering it was all unanimous, it'd be fine as is.
Yeah, I think we have plenty of discussion. I think everybody understood what it was we were attempting to do. Is it okay for everybody?
It's fine.
All righty then. Thank you. Okay. Zipping right along. The next case is Vacation Rental Operating Permit-2016015, a vacation rental operating permit request from D&amp;A Properties LLC to operate a residential vacation rental, taxpayer identification number 1642238 at 1805 Buffalo Shoals Road, North Carolina, Lake Lour, 28746.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Before we go any further, can we ask about one thing being changed on this, or if it's right or not?
Well, let's wait till we get it introduced and get it on the... On this new one that we're doing?
Yeah.
Let's wait till we get to that, okay? Let's get it introduced and get the case started before we start correcting something.
Well, it sort of is in the introduction of it.
Okay.
It's on very... It's on where it says the property's located in R1 Residential District. And then down below, it says residential vacation rentals are permitted in R3 District.
So you're going back to the first case.
That'd be right on the memo now.
No, that's this one.
That's the memo, that.
That's the new one. I'll correct that.
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm introducing the case from this on the very front.
Okay.
That's all I do to introduce the case. And we've got all that marked, Melvin, to correct all that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we've got all that marked to correct.
I apologize.
That's okay. That's all right. So we will begin that hearing. Everyone that plans to speak and be represented on this case, please stand. If you raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say aye do. Let the records show that Mr. Shannon Baldwin, Community Development Director, representing town staff, was sworn, and I would assume that you folks, if you'll give your names, please.
David Robb.
And Arianna IU.
Okay, and you're the property owner, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. That Mr. Robb and Ms. IU are sworn as well. So if you folks want to sit down, we'll get to you just in a minute, have you come up front. Is there any ethical considerations, conflicts of interest that anyone needs to disclose?
No.
Any ex parte communications?
No.
Any financial interest be gained by anyone as a result of this case?
No.
All three, no, for me as well. So we will begin this by staff presentation, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Why don't we go ahead with the correction that Mr. Hornsby pointed out later on in my memo. It does say R3, and that should be R1. So I'll just go ahead and read this into the record. With the other caveat that there may be some corrections to the LLC based on new information that was submitted to the chairman. But I'll read what I have, and then we'll correct it in the next.
Okay.
D&amp;A Properties LLC, represented by David Robb and Arianna IU, is requesting a vacation rental operating permit to operate a three-bedroom residential vacation rental at 1805 Buffalo Shoals Road, Lake Lour, North Carolina. Property's located in the R1 Residential Zoning District, and there is an existing single-family dwelling on the lot. Residential vacation rentals are permitted use in the R1 District subject to special requirements contained in 92.042 of the zoning regs. Section 92.042a2 of the zoning regulations states that VROP applications are to be deemed in the nature of the process as a condition of use for rent. This request was sent to the Developer Review Committee for review on October 6, 2016. Any comments received were included in your packet. And the comment basically was a comment that Linda Ward made when she reviewed both of these applications. And she basically said there that this property is not on the town's billing for water or sewer. And in pursuant to 92.046b2 of the zoning regs, the zoning thing Ward viewed was not required due to the fact that there were no proposed changes to the appearance of the building or premises for the application.
Okay. Do you want to address the LLC now? Do you want...
Yeah, I don't have the information you have.
I knew you were just going to say that. The application, if you'll turn over to the application, I think, we just... The person making the application is listed as D&amp;A Properties LLC. And we received an email from David Robb on Friday. I'm getting the times right here. They sent an email at 9:38 on Friday, October the 21st, that said they have their house on 1805 Buffalo Shoals meeting scheduled in regards to application for VROP. They just noticed that, we just noticed that we made a mistake on the application form. We gave you the name of our LLC as D&amp;A Properties LLC, when in fact it should be IU-Robb Investments LLC. We put the name in as a placeholder while our lawyers set up the LLC for us and forgot to change it. We did give the correct name to the Rutherford County Tax Office. I hope that doesn't cause too much trouble. And at 9:46, Michelle said she would make Shannon aware of this. It may mean you'll need to amend the application. I'll talk with Shannon, see if this may affect you in any way. And then reply to that, this is an email to confirm that the members of the LLC IU-Robb Investments LLC are David Robb and Arianna IU. We both confirm that we agree to the house being used as a vacation rental. So they're the two members of the LLC, and they both are present here today. Okay? So we're going to amend the application to not be D&amp;A Properties LLC.
Staff exhibit that you got there.
That's right. That's why we've got those. These will both become staff exhibits for, I guess, everyone will remember. A and B?
Yep.
So we have a motion to make that correction and change the...
Who's asking for the amended, is that based on the email? Or do we wait for them to do that, once we open the case?
Well, they made this request on Friday by these things, so I... Would you say we...
I think you can act on that email.
We can act on it and change that. Correct that on this.
I'll make the motion to amend the application to state that IU-Robb Investments LLC to replace D&amp;A Properties LLC as a person making the application. And also as owner listed midway down.
Okay, we have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
The opposed, no. Thank you. Shannon, you want to get these? Sir. Okay, Mr. Baldwin? You want to...
I think the applicants are next.
Yeah. That's all you had to say, is what you...
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know if you had...
Other than the only comments we've received are the ones that Linda Ward basically reviewed this and the lower, or the Hammond property, and said that they're not on the town's water.
Okay, all right.
Or not billing them correctly.
Right.
Any response from the nearby neighbors?
No.
Okay. Nothing else from Mr. Baldwin? You folks both welcome to come up to the podium if you like, or who's going to be the spokesperson? If you'll state your name and property address?
My name is David Robb. The property address is 1805 Buffalo Shoals Road, Lake Lour.
Okay. And you're requesting, you can tell us what you're requesting?
Yes, we're requesting a permit to operate as vacation rental. And it's a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And it's 1,200 square feet, half-acre lot. We've got a septic tank and a well.
Okay. And in reading through this, there's not lake access there with the property? And I've been reading through this, there's no, not lake access there with the property? Anyone have questions that they would like to?
Yes, so, I noticed you have a storage building in the back. Do you intend to keep your garbage cans in that?
The vacation rental requires animal re, uh, not animal proof. Animal-resistant trash receptacles because of the bears and the, and the raccoons and opossums, that's, that's, uh, some people keep them in their garage, some people keep them in their shed, but if they're outside, they have to be secured in some way in, in an enclosure or something built.
I think I'd probably keep them, um, underneath the front, and.
Well, in the, in the back, there's a, um, there's an area that's got, um, like lattice, and it's got a door with a little, like a latch that I, I think requires human hands to open it, so it's, um, if, if the town would prefer, we can keep them in the shed, it's just a little shed, but we were thinking originally that we could keep them under, it's sort of under, there's like a sunroom in the back that's enclosed, and so it's, it would be down sort of in the back of the house, um, in that lattice in area.
That would be fine, but it would not be bear-proof. You need a bear-proof container, or an animal-resistant container. A bear could rip that lattice off in five seconds.
So, it doesn't, the zoning regs don't require bear-proof container?
No, animal-resistant.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, that would be adequate?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, lattice would not be adequate.
Well, I, I don't think we can require a specific container. We, we can require, they can build a, a, you know, something out of lattice, or wood, or slats, or anything, and use a regular trash can, as long as that trash can's in that and it's, and it's secured. I don't think, we, I don't think the regulation states, uh, that it's a.
Bear-resistant.
Animal-resistant container.
It does say animal-resistant, but, um, you correct me that it doesn't say bear-resistant. But, we know what a bear will do to that. We see that all the time. They tear up these little enclosures that are made with lattice. They don't stop them at all.
Okay, define animal-resistant, uh, container for me.
Me?
Yes.
Something with a lock on it, a latch, that will prevent an animal from opening up that container. And they're, they are available on the market now. And they're advertised as being bear-resistant.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a difference between animal-proof and animal-resistant?
There's, there's no.
There's no such thing.
Yeah.
There is no animal-proof.
No.
Okay, so, we had a container which was animal-resistant, but was also in a lattice area, it'd be kind of two things, keeping animals out.
Right.
Up air, tore the lattes off, the container would still be resistant.
If you have the animal-resistant container, that satisfies our regulations.
Mr. Ballin, can we, do you have the regulation there that states, states the, what specifically it says about the container?
Says household trash must be bagged and disposed of in trash receptacles. Trash receptacles shall be in the size and number authorized by existing refuse contracts and shall be animal-resistant. So, if it was in a, uh, if it was in a plastic garbage can, it would probably keep out a chipmunk, and you could say it's animal-resistant.
Right.
But it probably wouldn't keep out a, a, a polar bear. So, I think the board may be.
Temperature may be that.
You're kind of handcuffed by the language because, uh, what may be animal-resistant, one animal may not work for the other. And I think the board certainly could exercise some discretion, but I do think you are somewhat handcuffed in that almost anything is animal-resistant, it just depends on what animal you're talking about. Uh, in this case, I think we do have some issues with bear. Certainly, I think the applicant could, could, could agree in front of you, say, well, hey, we can add some, some sort of wire or something behind the lattice that would help with that, if that's satisfying for the board. That seems to be minimal, but I, I really do think you're handcuffed by this language. You're almost, it's hard for you to, to, to.
Well, it's, it's just hard to be definitive. It's, you just can't be definitive about it, is, is what the issue is.
And the, the heart and the intent of the regulation is that, that, you know, get, if you was your own home, and the animal got in, you pick your trash up. Being a rental, we don't want trash to run across Lake Lour, so, but obviously, you running the house as well, so, we have not in the past ever required bear-proof containers. No. For all the VROPs I've sat on.
Well, there are no bear-proof containers.
Or bear-resistant containers.
Right. But the problems that we have is in rentals that people usually check out on a Saturday or a Sunday. They leave their garbage out overnight, couple nights, until Monday pickup. By that time, the bears have had a picnic in the front yard, or wherever the garbage can has been stored. And most of our problems are caused by bears. They're not raccoons, they're not chipmunks. It's bears that are getting into these containers. So, in a rental, we think that it's very important that it be addressed.
We do live in Fairview. We, we plan on managing the property ourselves, um, including coming down ourselves to clean it, um, and currently, our plan has just been to bring whatever trash is there and bring it back up with us so that it's not sitting there, just because even if it was just the smell, I mean, we don't, I mean, it's outside, but we still don't want, we, we live on the side of a mountain, we have bears that live on our mountain, too, so our, we, we certainly weren't planning to, I mean, we don't want, we don't want bears to destroy our property either, so that was, our current plan was to actually do that, to have, when we clean, to actually bring the trash out with us, so we weren't expecting, but we wanted to have an outdoor trash can as well, so that, you know, while people are there, they have a place to put their trash, because we don't want to have to, we don't want to have to pick up trash because we didn't provide a place to, for people to put it.
Okay. Any other questions for, for these folks?
No.
I would say, uh, no, actually, never mind, that's the other house.
Okay, folks, thank you. Call you back up if you've got any other questions. Any other discussions?
Wonderful driveway, thank you. Very easy access.
We like it too.
Okay, uh, if there's no other testimony, I would entertain a motion. I think we're ready for that, aren't we? Somebody stop me if we're not.
No. I'll do this one. With regard to application number VROP 2016015 for vacation rental operating permit to operate a residential vacation rental in the R1 Zoning District, I move the board to find the application is complete and that the proposed use, if operated according to the application and any conditions attached heretofore meets the following standards. One, it will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Two, it will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. Three, it will meet all standards and requirements specified in the regulations of the town. Four, it will be in harmony with the neighborhood character and in general conformity with applicable elements of the comprehensive plan. And five, satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made for those matters specified in section 92.046D of the zoning regulations of the town of Lake Lour. Accordingly, I move the board to grant the requested vacation rental operating permit in accordance with and only to the extent represented in the application and plans.
As amended.
As, as amended. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we've heard Mr. Hook's, uh, motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Erickson. Mr. Orsby, how do you vote?
I vote yes. I feel it meets all of the conditions that's required for vacation rental.
Okay.
It was pretty simple to me.
Okay. Mr. Hook?
I vote yes. Um, the application is complete once amended, and it met the five findings of fact.
Mr. Butts?
I also vote yes. Uh, the standards have been met, given the testimony given today, specifically that the, the homeowner, the property owner has stated that they, um, are going to provide animal-resistant containers and define that as they feel they need to. And then I feel that all, all, yeah, all five standards have been met by the application and the, uh, testimony.
Mr. Erickson?
I also vote yes. I feel that the owners, uh, have addressed the, uh, garbage, uh, situation in an adequate manner.
Okay. And I also vote yes. I think all the requirements have, uh, been met. It's a complete application. The folks, uh, are going to be their own managers and take care of everything themselves, so I think that everything should be, uh, handled very well there. So, this, uh, conditional use permit for vacation rental is approved, and we thank you, folks, if you'll get with Mr. Ballin, uh, he will give you the, the next steps to, to have, to do, so, thank you very much. Uh, I'd like for us to take a five-minute break before we get to this next one.